... Good evening. Welcome to the Village Board Meeting of September 8th. Everybody had a good Labor Day weekend? It is, summer's officially over. I officially put a tie on. I haven't had a tie on since June. I put on twice the whole summer. I can't believe we're back, but I had to put socks on. We haven't made it to socks, we've just made it to a tie. Hope everybody had a great summer. And we get to do the work here again. Here we go. Just a reminder, there's an emergency. We need to sit out for a year in the building. Please go to your cars. Please do not leave until somebody or emergency service personnel. Also, this is a non-smoking building, so they are ordered to mask. Make way after the back of the building. Any questions?
Yes, good evening, everybody. I refuse to let summer be gone, but I guess it's always right. Approve of the board meeting minutes of August 25th, 2014, please.
Motion to accept is presented.
Motion.
Second. Change to the division. All in favor?
Aye.
It's okay.
Do you need the treasure before this?
The treasure is not sealed, so.
Okay, the bills for the period total $324,265.26. Top 5 H2M, $15,951.94 for the general retainer and Clara Rose Construction Engineering Project. Eastern Resource Recycling, $15,846.44 for waste disposal. United Metro, $11,893.84 for gasoline fuel. PSEG, Long Island, $11,054.71 for street lighting. And Global Monticello, $10,117.33 for diesel fuel. If I can have approval, please.
Motion to accept is presented. Motion, second.
Second.
Any questions? Concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
It's okay.
Do you agree H2M is reversed?
Yes, it's reversed. By the, uh, by the, uh... I'll start your question. Yes. Once again. We have a beautiful Patchogue home here. Landscaping and everything looks great. And we appreciate every time we give these awards out to the people who do such a great job keeping their homes beautiful. Guys, if you want to take a look. This is a home at Eight Park Avenue. April and Patricia Newcomb. Yeah. Great. And we appreciate all the work you guys have done in your house. And what that does... Oh, thanks. Thank you. And what that does is it makes all of the other neighbors take notice that they need to do this to their properties. So, thank you very much. We really appreciate that. Thank you. (applause) Now, what Jack said is so true because what happens on one is contagious. And it really is appreciated here by the time they... We've seen one more. So, it really, really says a lot for the residents and the community itself. You know, and I always tell the story, these guys have represented a hundred times. My first was appointed as a trustee was in 1986. I've been doing this typically too long, but Norman Electric, who was the mayor at the time, said, "As goes the downtown, goes the residential. As goes the residential, goes the downtown." That they're interlocked, that you need to take care of both sides. So, when the residents take care of their homes, their properties, people are tremendously grateful to us. So, thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Okay. Um... Oh, okay. Thank you. Request approval from men, section 413, yes, sitting.
Is that it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I thought you were going to leave.
No, I'm sure. There's a buzz out there. I apologize. I can't quite figure it out. Can we turn the microphone? Maybe we'll just speak loudly so everybody can hear. Better?
Okay. Thank you.
Let's turn these off and we'll just have to speak with a loud voice. There's no one out there can hear us.
But that will still pick it up for the minute?
It should. Yeah. Okay. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing be held on Monday, September 8th, 2014, 6:00 PM, in the Minnesota Building, 14 Baker Street, Patchogue, New York. By the Village Board of the Incorporated Village of Patchogue to amend section 415-6, a village code, to add a four-way stop sign on Jennings Avenue and Lake Street. Copy of which proposal, co-host on file with the Office of the Village Clerk. At a public hearing, any person interested will be given the opportunity to be heard.
That's at the, obviously Jennings Avenue, as you were to the new development, new builder's development by the firehouse. It is now a four-way stop. It had been a one-way stop, actually, then there, and it don't make door behaviors. So, any questions concerned by the board? It's all right. It's all right. What? Yeah.
I just want to make a comment. I've gone through there a number of times recently, and it really is, does help a lot. Really, because, you know, people come off that Lake Street or across the lake, and they're, you know, they're going pretty fast.
So, it slows it.
It slows everybody down, and I think it works pretty well.
Well, the other thing that's going to happen is, as I did in the section before we did, is in the bond issue that we put forth at the last meeting, there's about $100,000 put in there for additional crosswalks, like the ones at the Four Corners. Tri-Tech is going to be adding two out of the three that are there. The two on Lakedale, but we're going to put the one on Jennings, and we're going to be putting new crosswalks. Because I think the crosswalks make it safer. So, they're very identifiable people to see them, so. But a motion to approve is presented. What's that? I guess. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's okay.
And notice of public hearing before the board of trustees. Please take notice, the board of trustees of the Village of Patchogue, Suffolk County, New York, pursuant to chapter 435, section 69 of the village code, shall consider a change of zone from D2 business, E industrial district, to C resident district for the following properties located on the east and west sides of River Avenue, Patchogue, New York, North of Division Street, and South of West Main Street.
You know, River Avenue, identifiable properties, there is an application in, on the west side, and it's 1234 properties in north of that, up to school. And that application is for the self-storage. That application, I'm going to call it plainboard now. It doesn't include those properties including that. And on the east side, it's from the tracks, up to, but not including the Cow House, which just goes up that far. And basically, we're doing most of those homes that are within that area are multifamily homes already. And C residence allows multifamily homes. So, all we're doing is bringing it into conformity and getting it away from D2 business, which is, which is basically a commercial use. And I can't wait to see anybody besides the Cow Palace that's there adding any more commercial use there. And for E industrial, which would allow a much more intensive use than would be making it be what it's going to be, because it's not going to change. Those multifamilies will stay as multifamilies. So, first is by the board, so. Comments from the public? Motion?
Motion.
Before we pass the secret question, please...
Secret question, first. Okay.
Yeah, it's number eight on the agenda.
Okay. Hold on to that decision. Request approval to designate the board of trustees of the agency pursuant to secret for review of the Village of Patchogue, change of zone, certain parcels of the River Avenue. Motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Request approval to adopt negative declarations to secret for the change of zone to certain properties in the River Avenue. Motion?
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay. Go back to plain A. Motion, either request, the motion to approve the change of zone to D2 business, E industrial to C residence, on the east and west sides of the River Avenue. Motion? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's okay. Now, we have Health First, J.D. Hewitt.
Not here, but we are prepared to present.
Come. Let's see a van on Academy Street on the way to the base. We said those were not to be driven by pedestrians. Please, please sit.
Information about our company.
Thank you. Good. Okay, first, I want to thank the board and distinguished mayor for our audience. Time on your agenda. And also want to thank Patricia for helping us to actually be here this afternoon. And have with me pretty much the contingent from Health First. And we have two other members that will be joining us. Manny Musichel Carter, the regional vice president for Health First, responsible for all of Long Island and Queens, and also Angelo. Angelo Manche, he's a marketing manager, responsible for all the flowers and creatives that we produce. And Rena is responsible for managing the field of representatives that will cover this area. So, this afternoon, I want to present to the board a request for your consideration and approval that would allow Health First, which has a very large membership in this area, to convene a marketing arrangement that would involve a radio station, to have a back-to-school event at two locations where Health First is currently stationed in your area. So, just some background about Health First. We are one of the largest managed care plans in the area. Currently, we have 93,000 members, and excuse me if I'm speaking, folks, behind me, so probably turn this way. We are approximately 93,000 members covered in Long Island. And before 2010, Health First, these members were with another plan called Naval Health Providers. And Naval Health Providers had exclusive arrangements with the Suffolk Department of Health. And actually, we ran the Suffolk Health Plan for a number of years. So, Health First acquired Naval Health Providers, and these members, 28,000 members, transitioned from Naval Health Providers and are currently with Health First. So, Health First is really intending to establish a larger footprint throughout Suffolk County, increasing our presence in the community. And in so doing, we are partnering with a lot of local businesses. We work with the school districts. And intention is to ensure that individuals who are eligible for low-cost health insurance will have access to this information. And so, we have our reps strategically placed throughout the community. They work with the doctor's office, they work with the hospitals. Incidentally, Health First is owned by a total of 38 hospitals, including Stony Brook and included Mumeck, North Shore, IJ. These are all owners of Health First as a provider plan sponsor. So, with our membership, two things we try to accomplish, we try to accomplish with recertification. All of these members must recertify at least once per year, all right, to continue with health insurance benefits. So, we try to make sure that recertification process is convenient for them, which means that we do home visits, and we also place ourselves in a community where we're accessible. Currently, members are able to go and do recertification online. We find that most of our members are not savvy enough to complete the recertification process themselves. So, our aim is to make sure that we are placed in these areas where members can access the representatives who work in the area. We are partnering with the local radio station because, of course, creating as much buzz and as much noise about the activities that we're doing is very successful. We approve that. And so, making sure that they can hear what's going on. So, we have worked with a number of radio stations in the past, and currently, we are working with WBLI, and La Fiesta is a two-radio station. So, Angela's going to talk a little bit more about the events that we are planning for your consideration.
Hi. Hi, Al. So, just a good brief summary of what the event will entail. It's a two-hour appearance by the radio station, La Fiesta, which is a heavy Hispanic-driven station, and then WBLI, which is more of the general station. And I'm just going to have radio personalities to talk to the, I guess, whoever attends at the show. We're thinking about 200 people will be showing up. They're going to give, we're going to have giveaways. We're going to have Rena's team to talk about insurance coverage, and also give away backpacks and back-to-school related things. We've done these events in, I'm forgetting the area.
In Huntington.
In Huntington Station. We've done four of them, and we're going to do two additional Huntington, as well as two additional in Bay Shore. They've been very, very successful. All we're asking is if we can have permission to counter what these shows as well as Patchogue.
And these are really just lead generation. They're not designed to do enrollments because we cannot do enrollments in public settings. We have privacy and all that. Hyper-related conditions have to be met before we keep enrollments. It's really more informational and as much as also to share, you know, giveaways with consumers. They come down, we promote this on the radio station, so they come down expecting to receive giveaways. You know, if you go to a health fair, there's always someone walking around with a bag. So, we fill those bags as much as we can, preferably right now, back-to-school items. So, we have school packs, school guests, and backpacks that we provide for them. So, Health First, and we have been doing this traditionally in different communities as a plan. You know, we're fortunate to have over, close to a million members citywide, including Long Island. Health First has been rated as one of the top plans for quality by the state. Our 95% of our members would refer, according to the survey, would refer Health First to consumer. So, we do know that Health First has a very large footprint in all the areas that we try to make sure that we can recertify the members and that we can continue to add more members to the model for these volunteers that we serve.
Where are you looking to do this, Al, on it? Where are you locating that on Academy Street, that same month?
Yeah.
Yes, but they're...
And what are the dates that you're living here?
September 13th is the first one, will be this Saturday. And then September 19th, October 4th, and October 11th.
September 13th?
The Saturday.
This will hold up, I believe.
19th, October 4th, and then October 11th.
So, it's two Spanish events and two English events?
Yeah. Yeah. September 27th. This is what it's at. Yeah. Now, on the latter, it did say Friday, September 26th, and Saturday, September 27th.
We had those initially, and then we...
Well, who knows that pending this presentation? Yeah. We have another event going on on the 27th. Okay.
Oh, well, we're south, then we don't have those dates, yeah.
And we certainly invite you to come down and, you know, observe these events.
Say the words, maybe.
So, what's the name? The problem. An apartment...
I have problems, right, I'm too...
That's the village.
Or, or...
Yeah. No, that works out fine. I don't see an issue. How has your response been overall? I've seen the truck station, the...
So far, we have enrolled over 100 members being there.
Really?
And so, a lot of people walk by, and they're so happy that we're there. We saw a couple the other day with a problem, with a health issue, and he was so happy when he sees us. He just came in and said, "What do you guys are here for?" And then we explained the benefits of, you know, the programs, and they enrolled, and they were accepted. So, these people were so grateful for that, and so, the response has been really good. The community is now knowing that we're there. We also give them information about the providers around the area. We're also going to have soon the fair with Brookhead Hospital. I think it's at the end of the month. So, I think the response is really great, and we really appreciate the opportunity for us and from you to be there at that location.
No, because it's underserved populations. And where you are is really the force of the, of the market, serves that population very small. So, you get a lot of traffic out of that, in that block as you go, you know. So, I think the spot that you're in, and over the summer, we had, what, two? The Festival of St. James, which they do, and it's sort of, you just decide to risk. Down Wallis Air Equador, with many of the Latinos from this community. At the same time, it's being done here, having mass here at New Town, doing mass down there. We got their, like the old Italians, the statue, the $20 bills, they do the same thing. Pretty very similar. So, no, I think the spot that you picked is a good spot. I think you actually get...
We appreciate that because initially, the thought behind, you know, those two locations that we have in Suffolk is to kind of pilot those areas, see if we can eventually have an office in Suffolk. Because our long-term goal is to really de-deprecate the fabric business community in Suffolk County. So, being able to identify key areas that is, you know, strategic for membership, as I say, crossroads or hubs where folks commute, I think is important for, you know, our business model.
No, but motion to, although we use that part of Academy Street, 13th, 19th September, October 14th and 11th.
October 14th.
Motion, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have you reached out to David Kennedy in the Chamber of Commerce? Because the Chamber, is David here?
No.
He's on the scene. The Chamber of Commerce has a pretty good outreach to the Latino community. And, you know, they have to mail a list with 100 people on it. We just had a parade, 4th of July parade, and we got really good Latino participation for it. And the Chamber, they implemented that. David Kennedy, you know, fun one.
You can email each of them out, and I'll get you...
Yeah, I appreciate it. Any other, you know, organization that you think will be able to do awesome outreach to him that does a lot of typing, as many of us are responsible for outreach to this family community? But any, any assistant, and here comes I may. Yeah. I'm always responsible for the outreach to the Hispanic community, Paliya, and the system, I may in the outreach as well. So, the intention is to really saturate as much of Health First as we try to kind of increase our presence. So, certainly, we're reaching out to David Kennedy and others if you can. So, you're doing families one day, or doing hospital, is that... We did last year. We did that, and we'll do it again this year. Yeah, and last, last was the first time we did that.
Actually, they had done the Live at the Five, should have been a pleasure.
Right. Yes, so that...
Going forward.
Yes.
And we were also at the National Light Out, also there, you know, we were there.
And you're going to start seeing us on Channel 12. Some commercials will be airing this week, you know, like in November, some of our health plans.
And that's, I think, a fun, fun side note, we just picked up, ended it from the train station, and parking a lot of a couple of cabs with our commercial on the top.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we just, we just, so we launched that middle last year, last month.
Yeah, summer.
Yeah, the summer. So, we do, you know, the bus games, we do the taxis, we do the radio station, and do some, also some free media.
Some free media, a lot of the local base.
Now, Brookhaven Hospital partner also with you, or...
No, Brookhaven isn't our network, but that one...
But they were in the network.
Yes, they're all within our network. Yes.
Maybe it's destiny that your Suffolk-based village of business will be here to find a spot to...
That's, that's...
Right, right.
That's the intent. Because a lot of these members need our services, and so, being close to them is the goal. So, if they don't travel too far for our services.
Any questions to the public? But anything we can do, please hold the flag.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Were the hours, on those days, what are the hours going to be?
So, for all the Saturday events, the Saturday events will be from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM.
Okay.
The Friday ones is 3:00 to 5:00.
Friday 3:00 to 5:00.
Do you know about Salumet Pharmacy?
Yes, we're there. We know that our information is there because we also partner with David in Bay Shore. So, we're next to them, also there.
And we will have an event, actually, at that location in Bay Shore, with the...
The Jersey...
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you for the hard intelligence. Thanks, yeah.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, trustees, Cecile, ladies and gentlemen, David Smith with the Business Incorporated. I'm going to briefly touch on the grants, we're nearing the end of that cycle, or the process of closing out 66 through 74 East Main. That's the most jewellers, David's shoe for you. I've got all the paperwork for that put together. Looking to submit that this week. Partnership with that is going to be $46,000, six and a half. Turned out to be a big project. We ran almost, I believe, $160,000 to get a whole thing completed, the new theater completed, and also rebuilding that road there in the wall, that, you know, was ready to hold out, and so much to take the face of it. So, it took a long time, but it still, it looks good. Look, that's almost behind us. 178, the law office almost complete. I noticed that last time, it's just a question of, it's almost getting the scaffolding out there, finishing up the trim on the top, getting it painted. That'll be done. 27 East Main, Blums is underway with the front. He's had a little snag, it's going to be a two, three week delay, but they're going to start, should be about two weeks now. And to finish that up, it's really going to do the exterior in the front, the back end is way in the side. Should take some three, four weeks after that to get it done, and we can put that on the bed. 46 East Main, which is the old, yes, the old retail store, is being worked on, it's been power washed, they're doing work now on the evens, the stuff along the outside. It's going to be painted hopefully this week. And there's some other work with the corners, the moldings, the wiring, and some of the lighting that's in that work, which is going to be made. There is one light missing, we're going to move the light that's in the back to the walkway, so we'll have lights on either side. 1 East Main Street, that was the project that we took on, so the interior renovation at Quamille's. We took that on because we didn't yet comply, so it's deep prime and find a status, so we had to make some money. It's going to be a very modern interior renovation. We're looking to get that set up within the next week or two. Once we get it set up, three, four weeks should be out of the way, and then we can get that closed out as well. The benches and the trash receptacles, I spoke with this the last time, they have been on it, they're due to arrive by last week in September. As soon as we get them, we will look to have them deployed on the street. That will finish up that pool. East Main Street sidewalk project, with the sidewalks, the lighting, the benches, the receptacles. I mean, it looks great there already, it's supposed to be the finisher touch.
Did a nice job there.
We did, I came out nice. We did get the, those hanging baskets lowered, so now we can maintain them, it looks a lot better as a result. And I think there's one more that we need to take a look at on the Four Corners, we're working on that. The last thing, what we brought to beautification and the baskets is the irrigation. I had irrigation problems at the Waverly Smurf, and at the Waverly Circle, as well as the Long Island Road Station. There were electrical problems, but I'm happy to say that we got them resolved last week, and everything is back online, and new orders should be doing for the fall season. Just a note about the 2010 grant from Leo State. That was a $500,000 grant. We had great success with that. What has happened, though, is one of the projects that we undertook with that grant, 114 West Main Street, that building is going to be sold. So, with new ownership, what we did, particularly in regard to the apartments upstairs, is not going to be maintained. So, we need to look to recapture funds from the building owner, which happens to be George Williams, who I was helping with them. And we're going to get somewhere between 60 and 80% of those monies back, depending upon when he closes on the building. Because his anniversary date for the declaration that's filed for Suffolk County is the 25th of September. So, if his closing is before that, we won't know if it's after that, we don't know. So, it's out there, we'll get it done. That money, the back to the state, the back in the office, it'd be great if we could use it when we do.
Yeah, I was going to add, I was going to say, where's that money going?
That's not how it works. We, they write a check to us, we write a check to them, and they consequently get it back. Parking meter, reminder decals that I spoke of, that was an initiative that the mayor and the village all had. Because his anniversary date for the declaration that's filed with Suffolk County is the twenty-fifth of September. So, if his closing is before that, we won't know if it's after that, we don't know. So, it's out there, we'll get it done. That money, or back to the state, or back in the office, it'd be great if we could use it in the new way.
Yeah, I was gonna add, I was gonna say, where's that money gone?
That's not how it works. We, they write a check to us, we write a check to them, and they consequently get it back. Parking meter, reminder decals that I spoke of, that was an initiative that the mayor and the village all had. I'm happy to say that we did, we received them last week. They're being cut up, while they're not a hundred percent cut up yet, but we're getting help from the building department. Actually, the building department is putting a lot, and we thank them for doing that.
How's it possible? How's it possible, but?
You know, other than John Ashlight, I haven't heard a lot. I mean, they're on the theater doors, and even, he's a best, right? You know, people see him very often. I saw a few today who were walking around, which was good. And, like anything else, I mean, it's, it's a bummer. It's there, people, if they see it, it applies to them, they're gonna recognize them and appreciate it. If they parked in the back and it doesn't look hard on them, then they're, they're gonna see it, but it's not gonna register. So, it's better to have them than not to have them. This is gonna be a help in the long run. We, BID board meeting is tomorrow. There are two more presentations that are scheduled for the BID board, and that's with regard to our security counter initiative. We had one presentation last month. These next two that we're gonna have tomorrow will make the third, second, third presentations, and hopefully the board will be able to decide on one of them in the very near future. And hopefully by early October, we'll be able to get this initiative off and running. At the last board meeting, the board approved twenty-five hundred dollars to rebuild and refurbish three of the black-and-white directional signs, signage program that we had. And I guess that's from two thousand and six, when we first put that up. And, I mean, they look great, they've done their job, and they continue to do their job. Unfortunately, over those G's, three of them have met with a little bit of adversity. They're at EPW, they needed a few things. I talked to Jerry from Jay Signs, they can be put back together. We did get the funding for it, and two of them belong right on or around the four corners. They were taken down when the construction started. And the other one, I really have to, gonna have to go into the archives to see exactly where that one belongs. But, I can figure that out and get it done. With that, unless there's any questions for me, that's all I have.
Thank you for the home today.
Thank you. It was enjoyable.
It was pretty.
Very enjoyable. I don't know, you mentioned it earlier, but we had entertained a delegation from.
Australia.
Pittman of Australia today. And we took them on a tour of Patchogue. And they were, they were very, very interested in what we've been doing here, how we've been doing it, how the funding has come, you know, how we all collaborate to get things done. It was a very enjoyable morning. And I tell you, they, they were very eager. I was kind of laying behind with my group because we had a lot of questions going on. They were very, very inclusive, wanted to know a lot of things. I was very happy to accommodate them. I thought it was a great morning.
Yeah.
And I think they walked away pleased, and I think they're very happy they came. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Kennedy, look to your right, look to your right. Those people, they would like to speak to you after the meeting.
Oh, hi. I am busy. I will stick around. Okay, yes. For tonight. Well, good evening.
Good to get to show you.
Oh, and thank you. I, I'll continue with them, so I was included in on the meeting, the contingent from Australia. They're all talking about Live After Five, and it's been carried over Australia. They had a lot of questions about it. Thanks to Marion, who is one of the tour guides today. She told them a lot about it, so they were certainly peppered with a lot of questions. And what a great group. And I guess what really grabbed my attention is how similar the issues that they face in downtown places in Australia is downtown Patchogue, even though we're half a world away, you know? Finding affordable housing, fixing up the facade, creating street festivals. So, it was, it was a great experience. And, you know, now I know that Patchogue is internationally known, it is a pleasure. And thank you for including me on that. And yeah, we'll segue right into it. Hopefully this might be the last time you hear me mention a Live After Five, until January, when we ask you for the dates for next year. But I do wanna wrap it up. Our final one was a couple of weeks ago, and again, another beautiful night. We had a huge crowd, without any incidents. And it was a special night, and we did get to honor some two local people who made it onto the national stage, and Mr. Biz Marquis and Kirk Douglas of The Roots. And again, it was just a wrapped up a beautiful year. I would, could arguably be the most successful one we ever had, and that the crowds were huge, without any incidents. Everybody, from the vendor, to the restaurants, to the patrons, walked away with a real positive feeling about Patchogue.
I'd say that's a really made a huge difference.
Absolutely. I think that was the best thing that we did, was move it to Thursday, especially with what's hap, you know, with the way Patchogue is on a Friday night. It just makes the most sense, and adds an extra night of activity for a lot of these restaurants as well. And, you know, it just, you go around Long Island, I think Live After Five is really a signature definition of what Patchogue's about. And I look forward to doing it again next year. And I wanted to just give a huge thanks out to James Skidmore, our chairman from the, from the Brick House, who put together a beautiful event. I even say, he's got such a very sunny disposition, that personality, that I think that's what attracted all the beautiful ones for us. Yeah. And he did a great job. And thank all the coverage from the media, the long round of events, really did a beautiful job in highlighting the big event with Mr. Marquis and Mr. Douglas, and citizens' campaign for Village Open Government. I thank you for all the filming you did, and I know that is all over YouTube, but I really appreciate you getting all the videos out that you did for us as well. Look forward to another great event next year.
David, I have a question. How did show of us do?
The trial was a huge success. As a matter of fact, we're looking to maybe expand in some of the other events, like our Fall Festival. And there's some other things that we're talking about, that we're thinking about incorporating that. You know, and the more we use it, and the more people get to see it, you know, maybe down the road, this will be something permanent that, between the BID, the Chamber, and the Village, we could look to have that kind of permanent service in the summertime, particularly, to get people around. But all reports were, each week it got bigger and bigger. The buses were pretty much packed each way. And again, no problems with St. Joseph's College, they were happy to use it. There were no incidents or problems with the cars that were parked there. There were a couple of times where people did leave cars overnight, but St. Joseph's was very accommodating and didn't mind that, since it is such an open parking lot. So, you know, I think it was great public relations, too. People, even if they didn't get a chance to ride it, I think that the option was there, was, was very pleasurable for them to know that, so. And then we move on. In a couple of weeks, we move on to our big Italian-American festival, our St. Liberata Festival, which will be Saturday, September the twenty-seventh. As everybody knows, James Romeo is our Italian-American of the Year. We do have the call-out for our Botchy Ball Tournament. It's a two-man or four-man team. It'll be twenty-five dollars per person on the team. I know Tom, I think, has almost already signed up, so if I know the Lions are looking to, I think you guys came in second last year, so I think you're looking to take that next step this year, and take, take the title. But that's always a fun event. You know, be a lot of great Italian food, a lot of the restaurants are participating. That meatball place is gonna be an added venue for, you know, take care of that end of town as the Main Street, the Chinese district takes care of the east end of Main Street. So, look forward to great, another great day Saturday, September the twenty-seventh. That will follow with our Fall Festival, Saturday, October the eighteenth. This year, we're very happy to be working in conjunction with the Pac-Mac Festival, which starts the night before. This is one event that will be happening during that week. Again, the streets will be closed, a lot of the restaurants will be participating in a chili contest and a chowder contest. Not chili chowder, as I mistakenly made people believe. We're not making that chili chowder, it's a chili, or a chowder. But again, that'll be another great event, a lot of live music on the street, a lot of the craft vendors as well. We'll have a Halloween parade, kids dressed in costume. And that'll follow up with our Halloween happenings this year. As everybody knows, on Halloween, all the stores invite trick-or-treats to come on down and get some treats, as well as a token to trade in at our pumpkin patch for a special gift. And it looks like this year Plaza Cinema is gonna be working with us. They're talking about creating a spooky walk at the, at the Garden, and doing a Halloween animated film festival that evening as well, as to add to some attractions to do on Halloween. So, more details will be coming on that to follow. Again, I want to thank the village, the decals are out there. And Dennis or the village, if we need help getting them out, certainly us and the staff at the Chamber can help pass them around. I'm getting great feedback from them.
I'm asking you that.
Yeah, and everybody loves them. They're, they're putting them right up on the door. I think from the four corners down to Lisa Theater, I saw them all on the windows there. So, very much appreciative, helped to get the word out. I had a great meeting with the mayor and with Deputy Mayor Krieger this week to talk about future plans. I don't know what's coming up tonight, I'll leave that up to Jack to report to give the details. But, you know, we're just happy that the Chamber's been included on all the finalization of our parking plans for, for the near future. And then other events I just wanna highlight before ending my report is that on this Wednesday, September the tenth, I want to remind everybody, the Historical Society is doing their unveiling of their historic map with a little cocktail reception, six to eight, at the lobby of the Patchogue Theater. I know they're gonna make a special presentation to the village and the theater. I think Jack, you're gonna come down and represent the theater and the mayor. Hopefully, I think they got a nice, I think, a nice huge framed version of the map for, for you to display here with the tall that they'd like to present to you guys. So, please come on down for that. Following that, September sixteenth is our annual meeting, where we do elect our Board of, our Board Directors and Officers for the upcoming year. I'd like, very happy to say that our Executive Board is staying the same. Our President, Jacqueline Hensley, and all the Vice Presidents are continuing on for this year. We're very happy about that. They'll all be formally installed, our installation dinner on Wednesday, October the fifteenth, at the Turian Manor, that of course you will be invited to. And I do wanna extend invitation to anybody in the community, as well the Village Board. The Chamber always does an annual trip to the Casino Cafe at Davis Park. This year will be Tuesday, September the twenty-third. There's a fifty-dollar price involved, and that includes the dinner at the casino, as well as the transportation back and forth. The ferry will leave about five-thirty, and we plan to get everybody back at nine-thirty. So, that's it right now for the Chamber. Unless anybody's got any questions. I, I mean, I will, if I'll try to grab you guys before I leave. The St. Liberata Committee is meeting in my office right now, and, you know, I wanna make sure I lock the door before they walk out of the door. I have to run back there, but that's it. But have a great night.
Thank you, David. Again, David today.
Thank you. You got it.
Deputy Mayor. Very funny. I'm happy tonight to be handling Trustee Key's agenda, since he is out now. First we have here a notice to bidders, we went out for bid for an American-made used to do a cargo, compact cargo van. And I understand we only received one bid. So, I'd like to make a motion to reject this bid and re-nos. I guess, motions are, please, motion.
Second.
We actually have to do it in two seconds. Reject the first.
Oh, then we have to, to reject. Okay. To re-nos. Re-nos, and now to make a motion to re-nos.
The specs on the big can change?
No, they're just gonna be probably more widely dispersed, so that we can handle.
A resolution permitting the village to purchase goods and services from contracts left by other political subdivisions, including the town of Brookhaven. Motion?
Second.
No favor?
Aye.
Actually, what that has to do with is the Bay Avenue. Bay Avenue was just repaid, and we split the cost with the town of Brookhaven because the village line was suspended. And town of Brookhaven, being the size they are, their, their cost per ton is about twenty percent cheaper than ours. So, if we didn't do this, then we would have had to pay based upon what our bid is. They would be, this would have saved about thirty-five thousand dollars, basically. This just will allow us also to access other, what they have on their, on their bid list.
Is there some stuff that was pretty good?
Really?
For, for the pool.
Really?
Things like that.
Good. Okay, we voted on? Yeah. Motion. All right, request approval to award the bid for the elimination of the South Ocean Avenue pump station to Agio Contracting Corp. in the amount of four-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. Motion?
Second.
Second.
Favorit? Aye.
That, that pump station, the pump station here are the Chinese restaurant. We've given out a consent order since we gave it to Lawrence in two thousand and four to replace it or remove. So, what we're doing is, instead of replacing it, we're removing it. And that line's gonna withstand, it's a gravity, and the arches, of course, there. The sale is probably another half million dollars, probably a million and a half dollar job. The one proposal was, was about, we did about a million.
Is that, that's key?
Key money. Yeah, key money, not coming out of any, any little passes. Request approval to hire Diamond Industries Inc. to do concrete work at the corner of Main Street and River Avenue. Motion?
Second.
Second. No favor?
Aye.
Request approval for Joe Dean to attend the Southeast New York Stormwater Conference in Beacon, New York on Wednesday, October fifteenth, in an amount not to exceed three hundred dollars. Motion?
Motion. Second.
And that's all, Trustee Keys. What I do wanna mention, as David mentioned it briefly, the mayor and I met with members of the Chamber of Commerce Parking Committee last week, and we, I would say we came up with a plan. Yep. Working with the Chamber and the mayor and I, for the parking meters in the parking lots. And by the next board meeting, I'll have the presentation to, to show everybody. And that's all I have. Trustee, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, building and housing report beginning July first and ending on August thirty-first. Summons for that period were eleven. Building permits issued were fifty-seven. Superstorm Sandy permits issued were six. Plumbing permits issued were twenty-seven. Demolition permits, five. Rental permits, thirty-three. Notices of violation, thirty-seven. Number of complaints received for that period were thirty-two. And number of illegal apartments found that month was one. Fees collected in that time, ARB applications were six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Building permits were twelve-thousand-eighty-five dollars. Zoning certifications were a hundred-and-fifty dollars. Dumpster permits, seventy-five. Fire inspections, two-thousand-fifty dollars. Planning board applications, thirteen-hundred dollars. Plumbing permits were eighteen-hundred-and-forty dollars. Rental permits were twelve-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Sign permits, two-hundred-and-forty-six dollars, and zoning applications, seven-hundred dollars. Bringing the grand total of thirty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars for that period, July first to August thirty-first. Also, on another note, I'm happy to report that the house on Maple and Oak has been demolished. That's down. And two-oh-three West Avenue, there was a little bit of a holdup because the only people that can take the electric is light or low fuel. And I guess with the summer months and people being on vacation, all that. Long story short, that should happen in another two weeks, so that house should be demolished within the month. So, that's, that's good news.
On Oak and Maple, the Village. September.
Single-family homes going there, yes. Yep, that's correct. And I spoke with Peter today about a bunch of things. You know, there was an article today about ghost houses now, you know, where all of a sudden owners just disappear and, you know, can't be found and all like that. There's a situation, I guess, on Ryder Avenue, he was telling me about. So, we'll be looking into that, and we're gonna, I'll be meeting more closely with Peter in the next couple of weeks, and we're gonna meet like bi-weekly now, and all the certain things like that. You know, maybe there's some ideas we can come up with, or things we can do with some of these places. You know, these blighted noses and stuff, so. That's it, that's all.
That's, that's a pretty good amount of building permits for that short amount of time, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Wow. I wonder if they came in, did anybody send bond or? No. This is between that, this last meeting and this meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of people doing it.
Quite a bit, wow. You know, it was funny also, this week I was biking around Patchogue, it was a beautiful weekend. I must have got stopped five or six times from people out of town looking either for the old house or a place to eat on the water, it was amazing. And my wife, she says, do we look like the direction givers? But I mean, it was just really funny. I mean, people from Long Beach, Brooklyn, Westbury, because, you know, I would ask them, you know, where are you coming from, you know, that you're in Patchogue. But yeah, at least five times we got stopped to cast directions. It's pretty intriguing, yeah.
He sent the ball to the mayor's house, buddy.
Trustee, permit. Mayor, fellow trustees, yes. A quick little CDA report. One of the, one of the functions of the CDA is to enhance our community. And some months back, they, they had some funds to have a mural developed to go on the south-facing side of the Dragon Palace Crashdown, is that right? Is that right? And there's a lot of, as, whenever you do one of these things, there's always all these things, you know, you've got to get lit, like, to take the electricity off.
Right.
You've got to get the building owners' permission to put a mural on his building. We finally got it, so that mural is going to be going out pretty soon.
Pretty soon. She'd like to start this month, just working out the final details. You guys all got to see the mural.
Now, look, my other issues tonight, when I got your mail, I thought it was the April Fool's joke, but I realized it wasn't April. But I'll tell you what this is about after I tell you what they are. Request approval to set up public hearing to amend section one forty-three dash three B of the Village Code to prohibit the disposal of animal waste in sewers. That's a motion.
Second.
When do you want to do this?
Turn to twenty-second?
Anytime. I'm really an expert on animal waste in sewers.
That's a good point, so you all in favor?
Aye.
I can't wait for your reasoning.
Okay, the second one. This is my expertise, guys. Request approval to add Article Four to chapter one forty-three of the Village Code to prohibit the creation of conditions resulting in the congregation of water foul. Now, Josephine, that backyard, where those, where those ducks get together? That's a motion.
Second.
Now, why on earth are we doing this? Yes, the twenty-second is fine. We got an EPA audit. They found deficiencies in these areas in our code and therefore Tom Hurd gets to present these to the Board of the Public. That's all I have.
I mean, you want to stay in up all that crap that goes on your own?
Oh, I got a familiar of this. What is this about?
Back in April, we had an EPA audit and what they do is they go through all of our environmental parts of our code and then they, they give recommendations. Probably here, as we go over the next couple of months, a number of other things, changes that need to make. Pretty extensive, pretty aggravated, but probably the right thing I'll do. Trustee Devon.
Good evening. Mayor, fellow trustees, public, first seal. I don't have an awful lot to comment on. I was away last week, I was in Fort Myers Beach, Florida. You can't park anywhere without paying two dollars an hour. You go on a side street where it says beach access, and you think you've found a spot and then you see the machine. Two dollars an hour, everywhere. So when people complain, what do we charge seventy-five cents?
Fifty cents.
Fifty cents an hour. It's a bargain. Other than that, I don't much to report on. The Patchogue Arts Council and myself have been working tirelessly with plans for the Pac-Mac Festival. It's going along quite well, but it is, it's an arduous undertaking that we committed to. So I look a little tired and weary around the edges. I was working on it even as I was away. We're also working on putting out the call for the crosswalks. I did talk to Bill.
Okay.
Last week, and I had a long talk, so he sent me all the specs. What we're going to do is have a contest for artists to design a crosswalk that can go across the street from the library in that crosswalk, but with an artistic design. So he sent me all the information so that the artists know what the parameters are. Obviously, it can't be too detailed, it can't have shading and that sort of stuff. So we're working on getting that out hopefully in the next couple of days. And that's all I have to report on this week.
My question for you.
Yes.
About trees.
Yes, I have, I have trees in the back of my home. There's some spots on Main Street.
Yeah, right, by Levalle's office?
Yeah, I just, I told him he's going to get a tree.
This tree is.
He, he has, he has one this year and he had planted.
Yeah, but is there one?
Not right there. There's a couple of other spots. There's one about down by the Karim Mini Mark.
Yeah.
There's a couple. But in front of his, he had planted his own tree. He planted a dogwood, which was just not a good tree for that spot. So last time I saw him, I said, don't put anything in that spot by next spring, we'll get something.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is there a tree or are there trees that the roots won't grow up and lift the sidewalk up?
Sidewalks are the honey locusts that were put in over twenty years ago. And if you go to places like Sable, you see, you know, how they've managed it by making the tree pit a little bit bigger and putting Belgian blocks. But what we've done already, Ivan, Joe Dean and I, maybe there was one in front of Main Street Cafe, we just had Joe's guys release some concrete. Ivan evaluated the roots and in cases the roots can be shaded down and then put new concrete over and should be good for quite a while. The trees that I've planted for the last few years, mostly the elms and the zelkowas, I don't think they have that problem.
They're deeper.
They're deeper, see, especially the elms. I mean, I was up in Saratoga where they have, and out in East Hampton where they have very mature elms and I haven't seen any sidewalk problems. But anywhere that I see oaks or honey locusts, we would move the oaks. They, they, they have those kind of roots. Have which ones, where are we down in front of that?
Well, like the East Main Street was an issue.
Which was a industry? Oh. I mean, I can meet with Joe there and I can just evaluate the spot.
I believe they may, all right.
All right, good. We tried, but I didn't propose to. And that's exactly what I, I. And they are lovely trees. Okay, so that's all I have to listen to.
Trustee Devon.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees, and guests.
You guys had a great summer.
Yeah, we did.
You guys really had a great summer.
This, this summer was, was excellent for the Recreation Department. The, all the enrollment in our programs, the camps and the pool, sailing, fun in the sun, it was, it was, just exceeded our expectations. The staff was especially just fantastic. Pool's closed.
Did they cover yet or?
No, no. The, next to you, get woken up every night at two o'clock in the morning when the wind picks up, the wave alongs.
Doesn't hear anything.
Yeah, it's just, we're getting bigger ones. And so the cut was going to be going on. Pool soon, boats put away. And we had a excellent summer at the pool. Excellent and safe. So it was just great. Very proud of the staff, Maria, the man, and Lord Monte did a fabulous job. Last weekend was the old-time softball game. With the loss of Sam Perry and Jerry Avellino, they are boundarying somewhat for a leader. And we're meeting this week with the town of Brookhaven. I don't know what league it would be, but they're retired people's softball there. And we're going to try to pump up the enrollment. And it was also very lightly offended by the others. So we had a great time, it was fun. And I'd like to request approval for the Sable Running Company to hold their annual ten-mile run on Saturday, January seventeenth, twenty fifteen, beginning at eight AM. For you who don't, yous who don't, you don't know, this.
Yous?
Yous, yous, this is a, this is a very, very popular race, not especially in Patchogue as it, as it is for out-of-town runners, which has been especially problematic in the past because it ties up River Avenue for hours in the past, in fact. Last year, and we're going to continue with it this year, it's just going to be starting on River Avenue very early, eight o'clock in the morning. It's going to be finishing on Weeks Street, which means that the impact on River Avenue is going to be much lighter than the years past. And we've worked with the Sable Running Club in doing this. They accommodated us as well as the suburbs.
Wouldn't it, which one do you hope to be?
Excuse me?
What's the route?
They start going south on River.
Okay.
And then they take Middle Road. Is it, is it called Middle Road?
Yes.
At that point, Middle Road to Sable, they run around the parking lot area, Sable, the back lot.
Yeah.
And then they come back on railroad streets. Do you know which one's railroad? It's just south of the railroad tracks.
Good.
Makes its way around, it's a ten-mile run. But once they leave River Avenue or Arch, it's over.
Then the rest it looks like is outside the village.
Yep.
And the finish line is outside the village.
Yep.
That's great.
Yep, I agree. So that's, and there'll be signage, of course, under Rabbit. And we've encouraged the promoter to increase his notifying the apartment complexes on the route. Problem apartment complexes are, a lot of the people who own their owner are non-occupied, so we send out notices, notices go to New Mexico, they go to Boston, and they never really get to the people who are affected by it. So we start to, more notices, laundry rooms, alabs, and so on. So that's a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Mr., thank you very much.
Anything else by the board? Chris. Public to be heard.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. Board members, Patty.
Sorry, sorry, I'm on my ride. I sit on my steps today, you never come by.
In a complex.
Yeah, maybe I'm a tire.
Down Watson, sixty Palm Street. I just want to offer some thanks to everybody that was involved in fixing the home next to me. I spoke with Peter about it. And did a nice job. And I'm not in a rush for anybody to buy it, but it looks so much better.
Is it, is it for sale?
Rumor has the bank is going to wash it off.
Okay.
See what happens. Needs a lot of work inside. Sal, thank you that fifty-five gallon drums removed, okay? And I see the village removed the steel guardrails approaching that practice arch.
Yeah.
Which tells me they probably have no plans to use that. Maybe the whole thing can go away.
Well, you know, the arch was put up, the youth that was put up, and then there was a young man that was killed. I think it was Christian.
Christian.
And the track has been dedicated to him, the arch has been dedicated to him, so we can't see the fire department putting the chainsaw to that very soon.
Okay.
But what I asked them to do is make it safe and make it cleaner, make it so that hopefully they'll paint it.
Con, con, they said they have the paint, they just haven't had the, not appears to make it yet.
They haven't, they haven't.
They said they don't really think of them. The wires will shrink from down. Yeah, I did ask them about that, I thought they were going to do that from the bound. It's still connected to the pole across the street and the conduit is hanging on there. They cut, I guess the village cut the weeds at the railroad station. That looks so much better, thank you. And the Brookhaven barge and crane has been done, so.
It's a goddamn.
Where is it? Haven't seen it.
It went out east.
Okay, fine.
They picked up the Watsons before they got.
No, no, we got talked about that.
And they, they talk about?
It's gotten worse, Jerry.
They're not the kids, yeah? Talking about at the end, at the end, cost us a million, million and change to dredge that thing ten years ago and now the town owns the jetty. And it's their responsibility to rebuild the jetty. In fact, it wasn't really our responsibility to dredge, but we put together the money to do it.
Yeah, high tide's going right through.
That avenue.
Exactly, we're getting the migrating sand.
Yep.
That's on the east, east side.
From east to, if you just.
Right, spilling over from the east to the west, which is the river. And they were saying that the ferry was running ground again coming in this year.
Nice. Who's the fool that moved the crane? Just keeping residents happy, you bastard.
And I think the village is probably involved in making M.D. Todd clean up their act.
Put pressure on them.
It looks so much better there. They had trucks all over the place, cars all over the place. So however that happened, it works, thank you.
See, I want to lash with everything.
Four or five years.
Oh.
They really got a good spot. They really should move.
I do want to let you know, an hour into graffiti, ever since.
Did you do the graffiti on it?
That was you? Removing, now, oh, 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 oh. Ever since I helped Adriana remove the graffiti on the mural on Bravo, I got my own can of goofball and it's very effective. And I cleaned the graffiti that was on the bus waiting station.
But what you can do though, you have to take a picture of it before you, you have to take a picture of it dated before you remove it. Because what we want to do is if the same tag shows up someplace else, we can get the kid that does it, then, then they pile this stuff on top of each other. So if you do, if you do do it, take a picture of it with your phone. And email it to my, email it to Peter with a date, time, and location. Go about your business, you know. But, you know, these graffiti kids do basically the same thing over and over.
Don't see that much anymore, luckily.
No.
But I say just give me a call if you see something, I'll go try to take care of it. Because I know I've gotten a call, I got down to Shorefront Park, swings and slides, I found stuff. I felt a little silly amongst all the kids with my spray can that I was removing. Okay. So feel free, give me a call and I'll.
That's great. Thank you.
I'll take a look at it and see. That's it.
You weren't up here at the last meeting, but I did compliment you on standing on Trio.
Oh.
And I told the whole story and Dennis informed us tonight that the irrigation has been fixed, so it should now be getting not too much water, but a bit correct amount of water.
Is there cement down below that? Because I drove the stakes in.
Yeah.
And they couldn't build too deep, so that's why I was afraid, it's not going to stand up to the storm.
Because Paula Murphy said she looked at it when it had fallen over and that it looked like the roots were growing out, not down. And maybe because there used to be a, the railroad, there was a structure there.
That's right.
Perhaps further down there is something, so who knows long-term, I don't know what's going to happen. But right now it looks happy. Thank you.
As I say, I don't think it's going to survive the storm now.
Yeah, well, we'll see.
Be some better stakes or something.
Then, you know, if, if there's concrete underneath, then we can't put a tree there, we'll have to put something else in the middle, some grasses or something.
I think it's about a couple of feet down.
And it's, it's so nice to spread. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. If I see you soon, you understand, so.
Okay. I catch up to Don sometime on Sunday mornings, he's always getting rather able with picking up papers. He's a, he's done a wonderful job, Don, your work is appreciated. Any other comments in the public, young lady? Yes?
Hello.
Name and address.
I'm just a therapist, I'm going to help him, I'm his neighbor.
We need his name and his address.
My name is Diego Luzurriaga, I live in sixty-nine River Avenue.
Diego, can you spell your last name for me, please?
Sixty-nine Route?
Yes. I made it a, a, a course, a film to teach my, my baby how to play soccer in there and I've been using also to play volleyball because I'm a professional player and I've been playing with my friends, that's all I do, I only play. When I got the property, the property was a mess. I've been working one year around in that property, creating, organizing, but the town get there and they told me like, I'm not supposed to have that, it's not even a carpet, it's a fake rest. I brought a sample in here. And I want to know what I got to do so I can keep playing in, in, in my house.
You know, we have certain parts of the code, what I'd really like to do, instead of trying to figure it out here, I'd like to set up a meeting with yourself and the building inspector and, and the building department. Come in and, let's sit down and see what you're doing, how you're doing. A lot of this sometimes has to do with parking, it has to do with lighting, you know, complaints by neighbors. So what we need to do is figure out a way for you to do what you'd like to do with the least amount of impact to those that live around you and adjacent to you.
Yeah, because I live right, right next to him, I'm at sixty-one.
Okay.
And I see them play and feel like even before the night comes, like everybody's gone and it's not even a lot of people, it's like, he's, you know, training his son, he has asthma, so that's why he has this down, I don't know if you want to see it, it's not real, it's not even real grass. They thought it was, I guess, real grass and they made him take it down.
Let's, let's, let's set up the time and if you give a call and ask for Ms. Seal, the village clerk, she could put a time into my calendar and let's sit down and talk about it, because we have this situation pop up every once in a while around the village and it really has to do with the quality of life of the people that live within it, within the community also, it's just, you know, let's, let's sit and talk about it and we'll come up with an answer.
Okay.
Sixty-nine, is that close from River?
Yeah, well, no, I'm close from River, he's right by the next door.
To the north or the south? To the north or the south?
On the right. He's on the right, he has the school, I'm here, and he's here.
Oh, south. It's the south side. So now you know, whatever you're looking at, are you looking at... Well, let's, let's sit down and talk about it, because, you know, I'm a person that people have the right to do certain things on their property, property rights, but I also believe that your neighbors and how we do it becomes more of the issue than if we do it. It's just how we allow you to do it, okay? 475-4300.
I'll give you my card.
All right. So now, do I have to take the, 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 the paint out, or can leave it in there?
Leave it until we sit and talk, okay?
All right.
Let's come up with an answer.